Good evening, I'd like to call to order Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 Tuesday, February 26th, school board meeting to order. If you could all rise for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, roll call. Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Ms. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Landwehr?
Here.
Mr. Bardell?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here. Thank you. Next is a mission statement. Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Next is the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, correspondence. I would like to take a motion for approval of the agenda.
Don't move.
Second.
A motion by Laura, second by Scott. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Announcements, March 12th, Tuesday, 5:00, Subcommittee on Policy in Superintendent's Conference Room. Also at 7:00, the regular school board meeting here in the community room. March 19th, Tuesday, 5:30, school board work session here in this room. And March 25th through the 29th, there is no school, it is spring break. Correspondence, Superintendent Kelly.
Madam Chair members, there's no correspondence tonight?
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda, because I think you all noticed that we have like an audience tonight, so that's kind of awesome. And the best part of it, there's a lot of students sitting out there. So if the board would join me, please. Well, tonight, we're honoring some students from the Columbia Academy, and I'm going to read some of the things that we're here for tonight. The Future City Competition is a national project-based learning experience where students in the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade imagine, design, and build cities of the future. Students work as a team with an educator and engineer mentor to plan cities using SimCity for Deluxe software. Research and write solutions to an engineering problem, build tabletop-scale models with recycled materials, and present their ideas before judges at a regional competition. Three teams from Columbia Academy participated in the Minnesota State Future City Competition. Teachers Angel Brown and Emily Christensen were very proud of the product and professionalism of all 13 students who represented Columbia Academy. Two teams were recognized as winners in the specific categories of engineering excellence and most environmentally-friendly power source. We've got Team Aura Bay first. And I would like to read the certificate. Columbia Academy and the board is recognizing for receiving first place in the engineering excellence category of Minnesota statewide Future City Competition. William Cook, are you here? And we've got Lapseng Chotan. The two that are not here tonight are Ella Zhang and Rescaf Awal. Now, we're going to go to Team, what is it? Cloud Nine on the environmentally-friendly power source. Justin Larkin. Thompson. Let's give these students another round of applause and congratulations. Also, if we could give a round of applause to Angel Brown and Emily Christensen for taking on such a wonderful project. There is a model up here, if anybody would like to take a look at it, that it's sitting up here that the students have done. So again, congratulations. You guys, we are so proud of the things that you're doing at Columbia Academy and representing Columbia Heights and District 13. You guys are awesome. Again, thank you so much for everything that you've done, and you just are, you're great. You're great. What more can we ask? Okay. The kids have something to say, apparently, right?
So we're Cloud, we're Cloud, oh, it does work.
Hello? Okay, um, our city...
Yeah.
Hello?
Yep.
Um, our city was Cloud Nine. We were located on the Colorado Plateau, and yeah, our power source was interesting. It was worked by power, I'm sorry, can't remember it, I'm sorry.
All right. So we had, the main problem we had for this year's competition was storm water runoff. So we needed to find a way to dispose and reuse the water. So we decided to turn it into our energy source. So when water falls, it's collected on top of rain gardens, which are, if you get a closer look at the model later, you can see, and on trenches on the side of the roads. The water soaks through there and through a dissipation system, which is a group of rocks that slows the speed down, so it doesn't damage any buildings or pavement. And after that, it goes through a series of pipe systems, which go through every residential area, watering all the grass, so that's one less bill you have to pay. After that, it is sent to the water treatment facility over here, where it goes through first, it treats for just regular pollutants like gasoline and oil and other things that could have gotten in there. Then it goes through the waste, which it takes out human waste or animal waste or garbage that could have gotten in the water. And finally, it goes through the medical treatment, which takes out any medications that people may be allergic to, to make sure that our citizens have the cleanest water available. After that, half of the water is sent to the citizens, so they can use it for their showers and everything, and the other half is sent over the side of the plateau here. After the water falls down and after it reaches its maximum velocity, it turns turbines, which create energy for our city. And we have another source that's our backup, and Duncan can talk about that. All right. Our other source of power is, around the city, there are workout gyms, and all of the elliptical machines and everything related to cardio is hooked up to turbines. So whenever you run on the machines, or pedal them, or whatever you're doing on them, you'll actually be powering the city while getting a workout at the same time. It's very clean, and the only side effect of it is body odor. Also, since they're helping power the city, you get a deductible off of your bill.
Anyone have any questions? Have you got any? Do I give the microphone to?
I'll take it.
Thank you.
Next. Did you guys want to come up and tell us more?
Don't run away.
Um, our model isn't here today, and two of our group members are gone. But we got the award for engineering excellence, and I'm not really sure what part of the city that is an award for, but some things that were engineered in our city are, our power source is, our power source is, well, we have several. We're on an island off the coast of Queensland, Australia, so it's in a place where it's very sunny, and when it's not sunny, it's very rainy. So we have roof gardens, and the excess water from those, so that they don't flood and drown the plants, goes down an aqueduct kind of thing, and into a water turbine in our industrial part of our city. We also have roads that are made out of this permeable kind of fiber, I guess you could say, called carbon nanotubes. And it's these things that are very strong, even though right now they're only produced at a very small level. They're strands of carbon atoms, kind of in, if you imagine, a chicken wire fence rolled up into a circle, like a long one of those, except they're super small, smaller than a strand of hair, and they're stronger than steel. So we use those for our roads. And then the water will seep through into a hydrodynamic separator, which spins around and spits out all the sediment. And then the water goes into genetically-modified algae, which will eat all the pollutants and make biofuel in the process.
You actually don't drive your car, it's driven for you by many sets of quantum computers, which directs all the traffic. So all you have to do is get in there and like, under like a minaret, so you're at your destination, so there's like no hassle and traffic jams and stuff, since it's all controlled by computers. And also, if a car breaks down, it'll push the car out of the way of traffic or redirect the flow of traffic around the car. And if a quantum computer breaks down, a backup computer is there to take its place. It's pretty good, because you don't really have to, like, blind people can just go in the car, because before, blind people had to like walk around with like seeing-eye-dogs and like, yeah. And now they can just go in the car and tell where they want to go, and they'll go there. It's also pretty good for like people who are mentally retarded, because they can just get in there and go, because they don't really have to think that much. Okay, so we have a part of our city on top of our roofs called carbon panels. They're, they look a lot like solar panels, but basically what they do is they take the carbon dioxide out of the air, which is basically carbon and then two oxygen molecules. It basically separates the compound and takes away the carbon and then leaves the oxygen to roam through in the air.
Thanks, guys.
That was really great, all the things that you've done. We're really proud of you. Next is communication to the board. This is where any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks and ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request the administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on any requests presented at this time, and I ask that you be in mind of Minnesota State Statute of Data Privacy. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the board? Anyone that wants to speak to the board? There is not. All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda and the personnel report. I'll need a motion.
I'll move forward.
Motion by Scott. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by John. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is carried. Next, we're going to go to discussion reports and information items. First is reports from members of the board. This is a time where the board members can give a little, a brief update of some of the things that they've been doing this last time since we met. I'm going to start with you, John.
Just a couple of things. I had the opportunity to watch the boys' high school basketball game against Spring Lake Park, I think it was what, last Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
It was a nail-biter right to the end, but it was exciting, and we won. So I was happy to be able to be there for that. The only other thing that I came to mind is, this week, I've had the opportunity to watch and be participating with the fire department, interacting with ECFE, currently the parents we've met with, a couple times yesterday, twice today, a couple more times tomorrow, where we're actually doing fire safety and education with the parents, and then the fun stuff starts, not that the parents aren't, but the fun stuff starts on Friday, Thursday or Friday, when we have, we're going to get together with the kids and do some stuff with our fire truck and some fire safety things. So it's been a busy, fun week.
Great, thanks, John.
Laura. Let me see. Well, I attended the work-study session last week, which was very cool, because we had our first experience with interactive communication at the board level. And it may come up at some point, it would be publicized ahead of time, and we would both be able to see and communicate with a board member from a remote location. So that was very, very interesting, and it actually went off with very minor glitches. So that was pretty exciting. I also attended the conferences over at Highland.
Thank you. All right.
Last week, Thursday night, I think I was at the North Park PTA meeting. So wonderful group of parents there, they're busy and active. I think this Friday night is family movie night, so if you're looking for something to do, the movie is Brave. And Saturday, I was at the school board officers' work session training and learned how to become at my responsibilities as a treasurer, so.
Great, that's it? Thank you. Ted?
I also was at the work session last week. And then a few weeks ago, which I forgot to report out, I was at the all-conference choir and band concert in Lindstrom at Shusago Lakes High School. And we had several of our students in the band and choir, and they all did a magnificent job, and it's great for them to have that experience of being with top students throughout the conference. So hats off to all of them and to Ms. Guanyama and Ms. Rubus. And then also, attended the band and choir trip to informational meeting last night. They're going to Memphis, so again, hats off to those, to everybody there.
That's exciting. Great, that's good.
I was the subject of the experiment last week via video conferencing. I participated in the work session via Washington DC, where I was asked to participate there by my employer, and that's about it.
All right. Well, I've got a few things to report on. I was at the West Metro Education Executive Meeting, participated in that, also with a West Metro Education Program Board Meeting, where Tony John sat as our acting superintendent, went very well. A lot of exciting things coming out of WMEP still. Elder's Wisdom, keep an eye on that, there's going to be things at the Capitol, there's going to be things all over the state, and hopefully, we'll be participating in some of them. I also came in the end part of the work session, because I had to work, I have a job, so I just saw you in the end via Skype, and it seemed like it worked pretty well.
Yeah, worked well.
Good, good.
Thank you to all my fellow board members for helping me make it work, and Director Anikins for making it all work.
There was only one problem, we couldn't figure out where to put your nameplate.
Yeah, and that was...
Well, if that was the only problem, it was a great success.
And then I had a couple of, I had a really busy week, and as you all know, I sit on the State Board of Education now. So I went through my orientation out in St. Peter. My GPS sent me to a barn, and I figured that wasn't where MSBA was, but I did finally find their offices, and I had a day-long of meeting staff and getting orientated to some of the positions and some of the things that MSBA does. And then I was, then I went to, down to St. Paul for a three-day retreat, where we discussed some of the things that would be happening throughout the state, getting some, again, some committees straightened out, some of the things that I will be doing. And everybody thought I was a really quiet person, because I didn't say a whole lot through that whole entire retreat. I just basically sat there and took it all in and tried to learn. I got to know fellow board members all across the state. I am once again honored to sit on that Board of Education. Then the big turnout was Sunday morning, when we had our very first board meeting, and yes, Laura, I got to wear the fun little Minnesota pin that you admired. And that was really interesting. Grace came from the legislature and talked about the House and the Senate and all the bills sitting there. We had a list this long highlighted. I talked with Kathy, and I've talked with people around the state about PEAP and the insurance, and I see Carolyn Lane sitting out here tonight, welcome. And I would love to have a conversation with you at the end of the board meeting, if at all possible. And I have been talking with also Barb Goodwin and some other senators and legislators across the state regarding some of these bills that are coming forward, things that will affect public education, and learning how I can be down at the Capitol, hopefully lobbying for K-12. I also ended that on a great note, there's many things coming forward. NSBA is taking a whole new turn, and will be looking like something very new, more on a federal level of lobbying for MSBA and the states across the nation. So we will be hosting NSBA here in July, and I will give you guys more information as we go forward. And also, there will be numerous other things at the Capitol that I'll be participating in, so I'm really very excited and very, very overwhelmed, I will tell you that right now, but proud to be representing Columbia Heights at that. And I am also meeting with numerous board members across our district, and hoping to host a breakfast or brunch here, and I would like to invite the board members to come and meet other members in District 5. But that's in the works, so I'm working on that as we speak, so we'll see how that ends up. So already getting phone calls from across the district on different issues, and I'm pretty new, so. And the fun thing, I was also at the JV and the Varsity Basketball, Go Heights, they did it again, JV won, and so did Varsity, and you're right, it was a total nail-biter, but they are out there doing it, and we hear that kids made it in the swim team also at the state, so our kids are out there working hard, please go out and support them at their, at the different sporting events, it's pretty exciting out there right now. And I think that's enough for me. What about you, Superintendent Kelly?
Is it my turn?
Yeah.
Well, I attended a WMEP Joint Powers Board Work-Study Session focused on Fair Magnet School allocations and enrollment issues. It was a special event, because they invited superintendents and business managers and PAG members, Partners Advisory Group, to come and listen to the discussion around allocations and enrollment, and so Director Burkus and Hongren were also in attendance at that meeting. We have the Quarterly Achieve Program Report to the Superintendent. This is a program that's in its second year, and so Director Hollaby and John Ossum, who serves as the principal, or you want to say the AP, presented student achievement and behavior information, as well as a program update. And also in attendance was Research and Development Coordinator Rick Hammond, who gave us some data and some background on where the program might go. We will be looking at that program again throughout the year to make sure that it's meeting its goals as we forecasted. As those of you around the table know, we are in the process of staffing, looking for efficiencies and economies of scale. We are also looking at enrollment projections, so it's a tough task, and so we've had multiple meetings with high school, middle school, and the elementary principals and directors. The management team is still working on the satisfaction survey that should come before the board sometime in March, and that is, Springstead is helping us develop that survey, and so we actually were doing communications with California as we were, just as you were on one coast, we are discussing with people in California. So looking forward to bringing that to you all. I had the great honor of attending the Association of School Administrators Conference this past long weekend, and it was focused on Common Core, on 21st Century Learning Principal Evaluation, and Federal Policy Regulations, all of which fit very nicely, and I'm sure the management team will be very happy to hear all of this information tomorrow morning when we meet, but really great stuff. The highlight of that conference for me was really hearing Jim Collins, who was the keynote for the first general session, and if you remember, he was the author that wrote Good to Great, which we used as a management team, and I distributed the book to the board to inform our work. And this time, we talked about Great by Choice. And not only did he talk, he presented, but it was like watching a drama unfold, because he's such a magnificent presenter, so I was personally very, very inspired. The District Finance Committee met last night in this very room, and Larry Petrick was nice enough, again, to cheer it for us. And Director Hongren did a magnificent job of presenting the new financial report and all the other things regarding, all things budget. And so that's a great working group, and I'd like to thank that whole group for hanging in there with us. Today, if I look a little smarter, it's because I spent the day with Minnesota Department of Education and Principal DeWitt, and Director Bennett, and faculty member Diane Scully. And the topics that we were looking at, it was the third day of our training around principal and teacher evaluation. And as you know, principals come online next year, and the teachers the following. We have a great work group that will begin meeting in April, and we will complete our training, the four of us, by the end of March. Right after that, I drove over and met with Superintendent Peggy Flatman from Fridley, because this evening to prepare testimony, that we will be going down together at the request of Representative Connie Bernardi, to testify on behalf of All-Day, Everyday Kindergarten Thursday morning. And for us, we are delighted to do it. Representative Bernardi is carrying a bill that will help fund or recognize the funding at a, for what we have been doing since the year 2000, and for us, it's not an enhancement, it's an essential part of our children's education. So we're looking forward to that, and what was also nice is that the bill does include or give note to some four-year-olds, if there's additional funding left, that it can be used to support four-year-old programming. So that was a nice addition to the bill as well. And then, as everybody has mentioned, I attended the work-study, and I've had multiple conversations with school board members around this table.
Great. Thank you. Next on the agenda is update from Representative Lane. Welcome. Good to see you.
Well, good to be here, and I see you've made it more of a circle. It's very nice, and the technology and everything, it looks very alive in here, besides the children. So it's very, very busy down at the state Capitol, and with first deadline coming up, and I hear two weeks and one day, there's a lot that we'll be going through, so the days are very, very, very busy. I don't think I can recall a busier year for me personally there, so it's just been go, go, go. So the governor has put, as you know, some little money on formula, and a little money for special ed, and then voluntary all-day kindergarten. I believe that's it, I didn't have any time to check this, so I'm going totally off my head. But, so there's something in the schools, and the thing he did not do was address the shift, but my understanding, and you can correct me, is that once you've shifted, you've shifted, and it's better to see actual dollars. Is that, you can tell me more as we go on here. So that's the message we got from AMSD, for instance. Although some people are pushing to take care of the shift, but then where are you going to put your dollars? So there's some discussion around that. I'm on the Early Childhood and Youth Development Committee, I'm the vice chair of that. So Representative Mullery is focusing a lot on mental health and homelessness. That's his personal interest, to see some of these things get taken care of. I will make sure that this plan for what we call the scholarships for three- and four-year-olds are involved, and that's something that the governor is very, very interested in. And since we can't do everybody, the scholarship idea is an... And since we can't do everybody, the scholarship idea is an idea that has come through MLF, Minnesota Early Learning Fellowship, in the past few years, and has proven to work well. So that those who are the most needy compete for these scholarships, which then they can use as partial, actually it's not full, partial payment for, using for quality early learning. And that's, the other part of the thing, is that we need to continually push forth this what we call Parent-Aware, a quality rating system, so that daycare centers, preschools, and, for instance, Head Start, and then daycare homes can become trained to be up to three or four stars, and then they can take in the scholarship students. It's a good way to build quality, because one of the things is that if a, for instance, a home, a licensed daycare home, had a four-star rating, and had one student that carried the scholarship, every other child in that daycare would be benefiting from the training that this person had for the quality daycare. So it's a way to get quality spread out through our system. And the one thing, some people encourage us to be in the school districts, but school is one of the possibilities. The preschool that we have here, that I visited over at Highland, is extraordinary. I love my old Highland, even more now. And I got to talk to the principal over there for a while, too. So, that's one of the programs that is rated high, and Head Start's rated high, so these are all set to go. But it's bringing, most of the kids aren't in programs like that, so we want to bring all the possible programs up and keep parent choice. And that's something that the Governor is really pushing, parent choice. Education Minnesota gave some push to trying to say, no, we'll make it all in the schools. I didn't even support that when they talked to me, because I really do support parent choice, because this is a too-complex a system for zero to four, before K, that we can't just have, I jokingly say, you can't put your six-month-old on the bus and send him off to school. It's going to go to your local center, your local care. So we want those places, we want every place that children go, to be quality-rated, to be up to par. Because we are, wherever that child is, it's not just care, wherever that child is, they are learning. And the question is, is that being supported in the most quality way? So we want it to infuse our state with how we attend to the early kid, the little kids, because they are our future. And it is, it is the brain development that, on which everything else rests. So, that's my personal goal. And we'll see if we can actually add a piece in there for zero to three, family home visiting or something, where we can address that more closely. We'll see if that piece also gets in. So, there is mental health going through, that is school-based mental health, I'm carrying a bill on that myself. And, let's see. I do know that Superintendent told me that sometimes you give out backpacks that have food in it. And I have been, I'm working very closely with SECA, our food shelf, because we need to, there's been some difficulty over there, and we're working to get that all straightened out. And so that's been a great focus of mine, to get SECA running really strongly, so that we can do that again. Right now, there's some problems on the funding, and they don't have the supplies to put in those backpacks. So we're going to get that straightened out real soon here, and get them up to running. So if you hear more about SECA, know that it's going to be better than ever. Other than that, I am on the Health and Human Services Committee, the Finance Committee, the Early Childhood Committee, Elections. We are looking at trying to get poll books as a pilot project, to eventually, maybe in two years, have the possibility that all precincts around the entire state could be electronic. Now, pictures are another story, because that has to do with the Department of Motor Vehicles, and those pictures aren't ready for prime time yet. But getting everything up electronically, so easy in and easy out, instead of trying to figure out what the signature is, what this information is that the election judge wrote down, and we can't quite read that, her handwriting, or his handwriting. So to get it more electronic is going to be really smooth. So we're looking at a pilot project for that. Mon Labor Workplace and Regulated Industries, which has to do with Braun-Badden, but the key thing that's going through right now, as we speak, is the minimum wage discussion. So that's going through that committee. So there's just a number of things going on. But I will now discuss, anything you would like to discuss?
Do you have any questions for Representative Lane?
Actually, I do. I know that there's been a lot of discussion about, about mental health in the schools. And I can understand where you would want to provide the support early, because you can, you can perhaps forestall, you know, and help to correct and adjust for those things. But I am concerned to a certain degree about the liability that the schools would be under with the possibility of things like misdiagnosis and things like that. So, I'm a little concerned.
It's nonprofits who work with the schools. So it's school-based, but it's actually handled by nonprofits outside the school. So, the records for the mental health are separate from the records for school. That's how, the bill that I'm carrying anyway, has that in there. So it's school-based, but the funding goes to other groups.
Okay, I've heard a lot of, a lot of different things thrown around, so that concerned me, because I really, I think the liability could be really, really incredibly burdensome for the school district. So, thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead Ted.
I just want to say it's great to see you back in the school board room.
Yes.
Representative Lane and I served on the school board for a few years, together, so it's great. Do you ever foresee us getting rid of this shift, so that the schools are paid everything they're entitled to, so we don't have to borrow?
Yes, that is a goal, and in fact, it's in law, and it will be, we had intended, our House File 1 was to start that process, to reverse everything that had been done in the previous two years. But it appears the Governor has other ideas. So we will be discussing that. But, just to speak of that, I really, and this is, you know, personal, I really appreciate how Governor Dayton does not make, in my opinion, his decisions based on politics, based on trying to win election, at least, you know, I'm sure there's some of that. But, he said, what do we need to fund, what are our priorities? And listed off things on there, like all-day, everyday kindergarten, that we in the past had said, oh, it's too expensive, we can't do it. And he just said, it's a priority, we're doing it. Okay, now what do we need to raise in funds to do that? And so then he did all these things for raising revenue. And I just, I just appreciate that approach. It starts with the right thing, it starts, what do we need? And then what do we get, rather than, what do we have, and oh dear, we can't do, oh dear, we can't do this, oh dear, and then, oh, we can't do any of this stuff because it costs money, we don't have. It just gets us out of that, and gets us into working in a whole different way. I hope that the legislature can pull that off, too, because we have to go through a lot of people's hearts and minds who can say yes or no. And we'll see what the Taxes Committee actually comes out with, because it is bipartisan concerns, because of the where people come from, rural areas, rental areas, they have different opinions on how to do this. It will be an interesting discussion to have, as to how we actually raise revenue, because then that will determine what of these things we can actually do. But I just have to give Governor Dayton kudos for having started on the right side.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I had one comment, and that was, if I may, that you'll be happy to note, Representative Lane, that our early learning program has already qualified with four stars, the best you can get. And thanks to Kristin Stunkel and others, and that, so scholarships would be available at our site.
Mm-hmm, yes. Yes. And you'll probably get some, I think. But, yes, very good.
If I might put in one additional plug, and that is, of course, for All-Day K. Representative Lane and I have had this conversation before, but it's so important for this district and for our students. We've been doing it since 2000, and the year 2000, and I know you know that, Representative Lane. And we're just asking that, since it's not an enhancement, it's essential, that we recognize the cost, and fund the children for, as Kristin Stunkel would say, our littlest scholars.
Yes, and I think there's, I think there's agreement to get that done, so, without being able to say for sure about anything.
I know.
I bet that will happen.
We're just planting the seeds where we can. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, it certainly was good to see you. Thank you so much for coming and taking some time out and giving us an update.
Thank you, and do I have to stay, or can I go home?
No, you can go. You've got my number. Let's talk, okay?
Okay, thank you. Good to be here.
Yeah, it was good to see you again.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is K-12 Activities Task Force. Dwayne Burkes, Director of Teaching and Learning, Bill Holmgren, Director of Finance and Operations, and Mary Busman, Columbia Academy Principal.
Chairperson Lee, Chairperson Lee, the board, happy to be back here tonight to talk with you about activities in Columbia Heights. As you know, Superintendent Kelly put together a Blue Ribbon Task Force last year, and we met and came up with a set of recommendations that we brought forward. And so, just a reminder of that, we were trying to work from the strategic plan, trying to, again, to really drive forward our mission, which is to help all students discover their talents, unleash their potential, to have those worlds of opportunities for every learner. And with that, we developed a philosophy statement, and if you, if I may, I'm just going to read that. "To provide an attractive and relevant activities, arts, and athletics program which provides for student development and success through a balance of participatory and competitive opportunities." So around that philosophy statement, we really broke it down into four key areas that we looked at. And that was, we wanted to have high levels of participation in our district, high levels of success. We want it to be part of the personal development that takes place for our students, and that there is skills development with that. So, with that in mind, we came up with some key things that we hoped to drive forward in each of those areas. And, for example, in participation, we wanted to build connections to school, improve student academic success, and then increase just overall the level of success. And so, we've got with that, lots and lots of different things that we are looking at in those four areas. And we broke them down into Communications, Programming, Partnerships, and Finance. But far too many different recommendations for us to go through tonight. But, one of the main things that we did talk about was to establish an Advisory Council for Activities. And so tonight, we're here to tell you that we're ready to go with that. We're set to begin tomorrow. And so, tonight, I think Principal Busman will walk you through what that Advisory Council will do, and then some of the first action steps that we will have with them, coming from, again, our task force last year.
Good evening, Chairperson Lee, Superintendent Kelly, and members of the board. The Activities Advisory Council will be co-chaired, as Dwayne said, by Dwayne, Director Burkes and myself. And the membership will reflect parents, teachers, coaches, directors, community members, and administrators. And so we will be coming together quarterly to look at the recommendations of the task force, and then move that work forward. Our charges, I'd like to read to you tonight. This committee will be charged to closely examine district curricular and co-curricular and extracurricular activities, and programmatic data, and based upon continuous study, it will recommend activities, arts, and athletics priorities, and communicate quarterly with the superintendent, and monitor the three-year plan implementation. Our next steps, as well, in that Advisory Council would be to establish an Activities Bus. That idea came from the task force last year, for students to participate in after-school activities. It would increase participation and increase safety. We would also, working with the Advisory Council, establish a new fee structure for activities, which would help us increase participation for our students, and improve consistency in how fees are established, communicated, and collected. We'd also, in working from the recommendations of the task force, the Advisory Council will work to improve feeder programs to the athletics, to improve communication between high school coaches, and, coaches and at the younger grade levels. We'd also like to improve skills development across grade levels. We're going to do that with the development of a three-year plan that the Activities Advisory Council will help us to write. That will come from the work that the Height and the Arts, we're going to use the Height and the Arts five-year plan as kind of a basis for us to launch our work here, and make reference to that. And the Activities Advisory Council will also measure progress, recommend adjustments to the plan as needed, and celebrate our success. So, our first meeting is tomorrow evening, it'll be a group that'll be meeting on a quarterly basis, and we'll be looking forward to making future reports to you and to the Are there any questions?
Questions? I'm going to have one.
Are you going to be working with the Rec Department at all, in developing those feeder programs?
In fact, the Rec Department is one of the community members that will be on the Activities Advisory Council, so they'll be a key component of what it is that we're working on together.
Fantastic.
Further questions? Well, thank you very much. Thanks for the update, we appreciate it. Great job. Next on the agenda is Building Vision Cards, Columbia Academy. Dwayne Burkes, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Mary Busman, Principal from Columbia Academy.
Wanted to pass these around, these are the Future Cities Competition Plats that our students receive.
Oh, okay. Thank you. But since it's Columbia Academy Night. Yeah, please.
Chairperson Lee, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. I'm pleased to be able to introduce Principal Busman, you know her well, but, and Columbia Academy, I think tonight was just another great example of what we mean when we talk about STEAM. We're talking about projects like this, where, that include arts, engineering, technology, science, math. And this past weekend, on Saturday, I had the opportunity to go and watch the first Columbia Academy robotics team compete. And it was fun, lots of parents there, lots of excited kids, and again, just another great example of what we mean by STEAM. And one more opportunity among many, in the school that Mary leads, that does so many great things. So, I'm going to hand it over to Mary, to talk, to Principal Busman to talk about it, and she has lots to say, I know.
I do have lots to say, because we have just some wonderful things, but I'll try not to be too long in the presentation. But again, Chairperson Lee, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, I'm pleased and honored to represent Columbia Academy, and to make our report to you with the vision cards, as my colleague principals are doing throughout the spring. First, in taking a look at our enrollment trend, we're going up, and we love to see up. When I started, we were at around 560, and we now have about 660 students attending Columbia Academy in grades six, seven, and eight. Our enrollment by ethnicity, Dwayne and I were remarking that, for the first time ever, our white students actually are in third place in the number of students enrolled in our, in our, at the Columbia Academy. Thirty-eight percent of our students are African-American, 28% are Hispanic, 25% are white, 5% Asian, and 4% American Indian. We have a free and reduced lunch rate this year of 79%. Our special education enrollment is at 17%, and our English learner population is at 24%. That special ed population is about more than double than the average state special ed population within a school building. Looking at our MCA proficiency over the last few years, I put from 2008 through 2012, and you can see that, in our reading scores, we're hovering between 40 and 50%, and we're continuing to see that line go up. In math, we're hovering between 30 and 40% of our students being proficient. You see a dip in 2011. That is the year that we went to the MCA threes, and that was also the year we went to online testing. So- So, last year, you can see that we, again, climbed back up again. That is hard work of our teachers who are really doing some great things. We're trying to understand how to continue to improve with our science scores as well. It did see improvement there last year. Again, this report comes to you as news from the strategic plan, the roadmap that was adopted in 2010, and we are specifically looking at strategic directions A and B, expanding access and opportunities by turbocharging what works and redesigning what needs to be better, and innovating to close the achievement gap with accountability and efficiency. So, the next section of my report will look at our vision cards. The first thing is what's happening in the classroom, and that is, our teachers are teaching from standards-based curriculum. Their curriculum is mapped according to our state standards. That is, nearly all of our teachers are completed with their maps. The next thing that I'm really proud about is 100% of our teachers are participating in professional learning communities, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that as we go along. As the assistant principals and myself complete our walkthroughs and going around our classrooms, we're seeing high engagement with our students in the classrooms. Kids are working in small groups, they're working individually, they're doing independent reading, they're writing, they're doing wonderful projects like you saw earlier this evening with project-based learning, but we see a high engagement of our students in our classes. And also, it's really important that kids receive instruction where they can most, where they can best learn it. Our reading and math classes are established for students based on their level of achievement. And so, we're really trying to focus on where do kids need to learn next, at what level are they learning next? So, our classes are mapped out in that way. This information from Encore shows that 30% of our students participated in Encore last year, that's a Level 2, that at the middle school or at the middle level, we also offer sports for seventh and eighth graders. So, I think we might see fewer students participating in Encore. Majority of our students are sixth graders who do participate in Encore, but that's because there are also things like our sports activities going on. You see that in, when I look at A-14, the next item, we are seeing that there is a little bit of a participation gap between students, and the information that I have to report for you is only information from this fall and winter sports. But we see our highest percentage of students participating in athletics, we actually have an over-representation of African-American students, which means that they are participating in sports, and that's a terrific thing to see. And the difference would be, then the largest gap would be between our white students and our Hispanic students with a 14% gap there. I don't have information for you on a parent survey. We'll be doing our first parent survey at spring conferences, which are in the next, in the next month, which marches the end of this week. So, next, I want to move into our map scores and looking at 50% of our students in math met their growth target. It's a Level 4 for us, and 53% of our students met their annual growth target for reading. When we look at the difference between student groups, we see that 6%, there was about a 6% difference between the achievement of our white students and our African-American students, and only about a 9% difference in reading scores, and that disparity was between our white students and our Hispanic students. So, again, we're looking at Level 4 and Level 5, but we want to continue to narrow those gaps. Our Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, 52% of our students met proficiency in reading, 37% met proficiency in math, and 20% met proficiency in science. You can see where our work has cut out for us. When we look at the gap to standard, 33% fewer African-American students met proficiency in reading than white students, 24% fewer African-American students met proficiency in math than our white students. The next category is, it's a test that shows college-level readiness, and that is the Explore Test. The Explore Test is related to the ACTs. So, in 11th and 12th grade, they take the ACTs, they take the PLAN test in 10th grade, and in 8th grade, they take the Explore Test. It's a nationally-ranked, nationally-normed test, and we see that about 5% of our 8th graders are showing that they are on track to enter college. Now, when we did, when we looked at the data today, only about 20% of students on this test nationally show that they are ready for college, that they're on the track through the Explore Test. So, while it seems like 5% would be a gasp, when we looked at the data and said that only 20% nationally of the students are college-ready, it doesn't seem like we're too far behind there, though of course, we want to continue to help our kids get college and career-ready. There was not much of a gap between the highest and performing, the lowest performing groups there, and that was 11%. Then when we look at our information behavior, our vision card information on behavior, we had 716 referrals last year. That puts us at a Level 5, and we're happy and really excited about that. Where we have a lot of work to do yet is still looking at, like we have an achievement gap, we also have a behavior gap, and we want to continue to work with, how do we keep all of our students in class? But we are over-referring our African-American students out of class, and we're continuing to address that. Overall, though, our out-of-school suspension incidence has dropped. Now, where do we go from here? All right. We, our goal for literacy is that 60% of our students meet proficiency on the MCAs this year. We also have a goal that 50% of our students meet proficiency in math this year. In science, we hope that, and are planning for 30% of our students to meet proficiency on the science tests. Then we're also looking at, you know, the MCAs are year-to-year, and it's the end of the year, what, how did we do? But we have to do some measures along the way. So, we're looking at what are our failure rates by quarter and also by semester. So, in looking at this, you can see some, we're kind of all over the place in some of our trend lines, but when I look at the last mark there, 2013, that was the end of first semester in this school year, and we're seeing that our sixth graders really are doing a much better job this year. Our seventh graders, they tend to go up and down a little bit, so we will make sure that we're really working with them in this, towards the spring, to bring down our failure rates. And our eighth graders have done a great job in the last two years to really stay much more, much lower. We have a goal that we will reduce the number of referrals by 18% for African-American students out of the classroom. This is a behavior trend, just looking at our data over time. You can see we've gone up, and then we dropped a whole lot last year in our office discipline referrals, and our out-of-school suspension incidence has consistently dropped over the last two years. And again, as I mentioned before, we can see the over-referral of some groups and under-referrals of other groups, and so this is an important thing for us to pay attention to. How are we making this work? How are we making this, how are we making the changes? What are we doing to address? I have always felt that when I was at Valley View, we needed to have teachers working together to make change happen and impact curriculum and impact climate, and I believe the same thing at the secondary level, which is why we have worked so hard to form professional learning communities, or PLCs. We've had about 20 teachers and administrators trained at the National De Forest Professional Learning Communities Convention in Minneapolis the last two years, and our teams are meeting twice monthly for 55 minutes during the school day. All of the, they're meeting by grade level or subject, I mean, they're meeting by subject area. And so, all of the math teachers are together every other week, all of the English Language Arts, or anybody who teaches anything with that are together, so you can see how they're put together. We have a school-wide goal, and that is, we're focusing on writing. We've committed to every student writes in every class, every day. Our band students are writing, our art students are writing, our science students are writing, our English students are writing, all across the curriculum. And we're following the lead of other successful schools in showing that if students write more, they understand more, they comprehend more, they learn language and vocabulary more. So, we focused on that, and we're focusing on informational text, facts, and nonfiction text, which is what Common Core tells us. We're focusing on the design process and positive behavior. Some of the things that we've added this year, the Science PLC has done science scenarios where they're giving real-world questions to the kids. They read, they comprehend, and then they write how they would solve or what's going on in the science scenario. Our students, like the high schoolers, are doing mastery quizzes. So, they have, the teachers have looked at the MCAs, what are the key concepts that our kids have to know by the time the test rolls around, and they've broken those up into mastery quizzes. So, our students are working on completing those throughout the year. In our special education department, our students are really working on social skills, and how do they master social skills throughout our school setting. In our health and PE classes and dance classes, they're recording fitness level every three weeks, and they're charting that. That's really exciting. We have newly revised health curriculum, we have a brand-new dance department, and our native Spanish speakers are pen pals to our kids who are learning Spanish for the first time. Celebrations, this is the fun part, right? Thank you very much for a brand-new front entrance, a brand-new driveway, a bus driveway, and the car-only lane. Isn't that beautiful? It's just beautiful. So, thank you very much for your commitment to Columbia Academy and making the place really look like the incredible learning that's going on in the inside. We really brought that to the outside. You heard about our Future Cities competition winners. Other celebrations are, our social studies department did a school-wide mock presidential election this year. It was a landslide, and, but it was really fun to hear the kids talk about politics in our schools, and that was, that was a great thing. We also hosted a geography, we have AP History Days coming up tomorrow and Thursday, we had a science fair, we'll host the engineering fair later this spring, our band and choir concerts, our visual arts students participating in band Phillock Sister City competitions, we'll have the end-of-the-year Silverwood Arts Festival for the whole district, and then we are also collaborating with the city on the Heritage Sculpture Project. We have offerings beyond the school day, our Encore classes for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. We had Willy Wonka, some of you might have gone to see that, and that's some of our stars of the show there. We have student council, and as Director Burkas mentioned, we held our first robotics competition on Saturday with sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade teams participating. It was just fun to see squealing still going on of, "It's working!" when I stopped in the classroom afterwards. It's really great. We have web leaders where everyone belongs, and we also offer sports in all the different seasons. Technology that's new this year, every one of our students has an e-portfolio site. That means they're recording their work on their website, so some of their best-published work is going to go there specifically in English Language Arts and Visual Art. Some of our classes, we're doing online learning logs, especially in English Language Arts. We have laptops available for our students in engineering, science, math, and English. English is new this year. We have document cameras in art and English classes, and our brand-new this year, our Spanish teacher is using the LiveScribe pens. She's part of Technology 2 Cohort, thank you very much, Director Hennickens. And the students are recording their stories that they're writing. So, our native Spanish speakers are recording stories that they've written, and then they are giving those to the Spanish One kids who have never spoken Spanish before, for those students to then listen to the stories that their classmates have read or written. So, that's exciting. Positive behavior interventions, we have Columbia Cash that our students as individuals can read, and they get to purchase wonderful things at the Columbia Cash store. We have a student assistance team that really looks at how do we help students who are struggling. We have an attendance team that is focusing on getting kids to school, because it's only in school where they can learn, and we have school-wide grade-level competitions as well. We are focusing on equity and family involvement. We were the first school last year to host REACH, the parent involvement program. We hosted our second African-Americans in Careers Day, and the second photo that you see shows one of the pictures from that, where we had over 40 African-American leaders in our greater community come in and talk to the kids about what it is that they do in their jobs during the day, and our students had to come in and find out what they did, how did they get there, why should I want to be like you? And that was a really wonderful thing. We participate in the monthly parent breakfasts, and last year, you can see, some of our parents on the top photo were at Mankato State University on a tour with our students. If you have about a minute, I could show you the CAN video. So, this is, I know that Mr. Fort showed this at his school, but I would love to be able to show you our students, too.
... January 24th, the dance is called the Winter Winter Bowl. It will be from 3:30 to 5:15 PM after school. Tickets are $5 before and $6 at the door. So, here's Keon interviewing some students. Kenny, what's your favorite thing of this year, Ben?
Um, that he gets on the line.
Okay, that. What is your favorite program?
We can't hear it. Can't hear it. So, Zach says that his favorite thing is engineering, and the younger student says that his favorite thing is they get their own lockers. So, some great things going on with our students there from Columbia Academy News. That's sponsored by the student council. And the thing that I'd like to leave with is this amazing engineering program. These students were our eighth graders last year, and we asked them to design, what would the front entrance look like if we had student input? And one of my hopes and dreams is that this sculptural project that Hannah and Jenna made is actually located in front of our school, where we find someone to build this and make it happen. You'll notice there's, it's in the Helix format, so they took a look at what we did over here with Synergy, and they said, "We want to have a connection to the high school." And so, their model starts out with what you've already got here. And when you look closely, it's got pencils, it's got paintbrushes, it's got protractors, and those slide rulers, isn't that, yeah. And so, they really talked about what are the heart, what is the heart of Columbia Academy? They really understand what STEAM is because they live it every day. So, that is my presentation to you tonight, and I thank you very much. I would entertain any questions.
Questions? Anybody have anything? Nothing?
Not enough going on over there, so, just kidding. No, congratulations, a lot going on. My one question was, you know, we have work to do on our science test scores. Did the science test change like the math test changed, or?
No, there hasn't been that big change. That is coming, the science standards are changing. I think the big thing with the science test is it's also a reading test, it's heavy into reading, it's online, so there's a couple of things there. We are working this year with a science specialist who's working with us to see if there's other ways that we can approach it. It doesn't, it, we do a lot of hands-on learning, we do a lot of work in labs, and test doesn't really work in that area as well, so it's fairly one-dimensional from that perspective. But, lots of work we have to do there still, and I think what I would like to do is compliment the, the teaching staff at Columbia Academy has recognized that, and since the summer, has been working on, well, days in the summer, weekend days after school, so lots going on there. Hopeful that we can, we can see those percentages jump up considerably.
Ted, go ahead.
Are there opportunities for, I know Valley, or I think it was North Park, was trying interventions when they saw issues, and is that something that Columbia Academy is able to do throughout the day?
Our, as I mentioned, our reading and math classes, if a student is, hasn't met proficiency in reading and math, rather than taking it every other day, we're in a block schedule, they get reading every day, or math every day. Reading could be as a reading class or... or it could be as a supported English class with a reading teacher in it. So we are definitely addressing and intervening in that way. We also are offering failures not an option on Friday mornings for our students who are just simply falling behind in their assignments. So we staff the media center, and any student who's behind or at risk of failing, the teacher can send them to the media center during that class period for additional help and tutoring. And our teachers rotate through that hour throughout the day to help provide assistance. So we're doing some of those kinds of things as well. And then the science scenarios and the mastery quizzes in math are other ways that we are saying to the kids, "It's not okay for you just not to get it done and not to learn it. You're going to come back to this mastery quiz, and we're going to retake it until we understand it." That idea started at the high school, and the middle school and academy students and teachers really, the teachers love that because we're coming back to the concept and saying, "You have to learn this. It's not okay to just simply take the F. If you didn't learn it, we're going to come back and reteach it another way until you learn it."
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I just want to say thank you very much for all your hard work. The enrollment being up at the academy is amazing. That's really great news, and the writing in every class. So thank you for all your hard work, and it was great seeing the kids tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is integration grant. Dwayne Burkes, Director of Teaching and Learning.
Chairperson Lee, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. We're already planning for next year with our integration dollars. And as you probably remember from previous years, this is funding that comes with statute guidelines. As far as the language that is used there, I just took a little bit out, but it says that it must be used for students to have increased and sustained interracial contacts. So again, it's about integrating, and improved educational opportunities and outcomes designed to close the achievement gap. So really, two things: interracial contact and closing the achievement gap. Those are the two areas that we are to spend our integration dollars on. So how much is that? And, you know, do we really have it? We don't know for sure. But we anticipate that the dollars, if they come, will be similar to the amount that we had this year. So a total of around $660,000. But of course, this is a big topic in the legislature. If they don't come up with a new plan, this money does go away. The Department of Education, though, has asked that we continue to develop our plans with, on the assumption that it will be here next year. So the deadline in statute also is for by March 15th, every district will submit their plan. So we are basing our plan on these dollar amounts and current statute, and hope for the best as we go through. So with that, there are four goals that we have in our integration plan. The first one is that there are dollars that are here to help with alternative enrollment. And for us, we have many of those students, our choice is yours students. And we want those students to have a fairly dramatic increase in student achievement with us. So some of the ways that we spend dollars then are to try to get at that family involvement through our cultural and urban liaisons. But one of the hardest things for us, of course, is to connect with kids who are coming to us from outside the community with special needs, one of them being that their parents are further away and may not always have transportation to join us here. So this is a big piece that you'll see again in other places, that we try to use our integration dollars to help with family involvement. Goal two is to decrease the achievement gap in MCA reading and math by 10% annually for the next four years. So we have a district. All districts also are required to have an equity plan that runs for four years, and that's where these goals come from. So again, our integration plan and goal two would be using funds to support more family involvement, not just for choice is yours students, but for all families. Equity training for our teachers and staff. STEAM programs, as you heard tonight, some of the things that are going on in Columbia Academy are supported by funding from integration. Formative assessments, and then interventions as well. And again, you heard Principal Busman describe what some of those interventions are. Goal three is to increase the percentage of students of color and other groups that are what they call vulnerable, or especially free and reduced lunch, Yale and special ed, where the numbers are fairly low for attending college, and that we'd like to increase that by 10% annually for the next four years. So here, again, our dollars are used from integration to support programs that specifically support that. Avid, which I'm sure you've heard about at our high school, we just graduated our first class last year, 100% of whom are in college this year. Just coming up halfway through our first year of working with the University of Minnesota on Ramp Up to Readiness, which is an advisory program to get students ready for college. So integration dollars, again, are used to fund these programs. Avid in particular is one that comes with a fairly hefty price tag, and we need this funding to be able to run that program. Finally, goal four, to increase intercultural interaction. As you remember, that is one of the things that we are to use our money for, to increase that contact between students of different races among K-12 students and their families within our schools. So here's where we put a substantial amount of dollars towards interpretive services. There's a big cost of that in our district with many, many families not having English as their first language. Then there are other arts programs, like the Columbia Academy Musical, and other programs like the Columbia Academy Courage Retreat, or the Summer Engineering Program, trips to Park Square Theater, and then artists that we bring in to work with our kids here. And so all of those, again, are funded in part at least by our integration funds. And then finally, because we are part of a cultural collaborative, because we are part of WMEP, this is where we also, there is a fee for that. There's a cost for being part of that group, and those dollars come from our integration plan. So our hope is that we will have a plan that you will find is, makes sense, and that the Department of Education will approve, and then that the legislature will have those dollars available, and that we will be able to fund all of these programs next year. I suppose worst-case scenario would be that the legislature does not put dollars into integration, and there would be, as you can see, a large number of programs, a large number of services, that would be more difficult for us to fund without that. So that's our report for tonight in terms of what we are planning to do with our integration dollars next year.
Questions? Anybody? All right. Well, thanks, Tim. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Whit.
Next is MINDOT Safe Routes to School Grant. Christine Stunkel, Director of Community Education.
Chairperson Lee, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. My presentation this evening will be brief. We have applied as a school district to the Minnesota Department of Transportation for their Safe Routes to School Non-Infrastructure Grant. You might remember that we currently have a grant through MINDOT for a planning grant for looking at the needs of all of our schools. And what we are doing this year is working with a consultant to do walkability and bikeability assessments of all of our sites, and also tallying to identify how many of our students are walking and biking to school. That planning is to coincide with applying for future MINDOT grants. And what we determined was that at this point, we were ready to apply for a non-infrastructure grant versus an infrastructure grant. So the details of this non-infrastructure grant are in your board packet. But briefly, what we're doing is building on some of the initiatives that have already been established this past year in our schools through our statewide health improvement program grant, SHIP. We are purchasing through SHIP bike helmets for the three elementary schools and Columbia Academy. And these bike helmets will be used to build on the bikes that the PE teacher at Valley View was able to secure for their PE program. And so Heidi Osterlander was able to secure 50 bikes for Valley View, and they're integrating that into their PE curriculum. And what we would like to do with this grant that we've applied through MINDOT is to be able to rotate those bikes to the other two elementaries and integrate that into the PE curriculum. In addition to that, at Columbia Academy's Achieve Program, we would be training the students on doing some basic bike maintenance. And so they would be able to do some of the tire repairs and such. What this is really going to enable our students to do is learn the lifelong skill of both bike riding and doing some basic bike maintenance. And MINDOT really falls in line with MINDOT's, not only their goals, but also the resources that they can provide. So we've applied for this non-infrastructure grant through MINDOT. What I'm bringing forward tonight is just some information about that grant application. I'll be back in two weeks to ask that you pass the resolution to support this grant application. And then at the end of March, we'll learn if we've been approved or not through this MINDOT grant. Do you have any questions?
Got any questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is class-size study. Nicole Hallaby, Director of Student Services.
Chairperson Lee, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm always delighted coming back to you with the third annual presentation that Northeast, that Metro EXU, that's Educational Service Cooperative Units, they're regional consortiums around the state that provide services to districts. And as you know, we belong to Metro EXU. And this is the third year that they, fourth year, excuse me, that they have allowed districts in the metropolitan area to participate in a class-size study. So I'm very excited to get to see that 38 other districts, so Columbia Heights and 37 other districts in the metro area submitted data to EXU. And this is all numbers that are reported based on the October 1 child count. I want to point out, and if you so desire, I can send you a copy of all the criteria that we have to use to select the classes. They're very specific. They want it to be uniform between all of the metropolitan districts. So Kathy Halk, the Mars Coordinator, and myself lock ourselves into her office for two days. The superintendent was kind and let us use her conference room this year, and literally just pour through the criteria and shove the numbers in there. And it always seems to work out in the end. So here's our observations. Class size by grade grouping. And these are the labels that Metro EXU, so junior secondary would be our academy, senior secondary obviously is the high school, and then the elementaries, and then K-12. So as you can see, the metro is the red, and so that's the average in the elementary, junior, and senior secondaries, and then K-12. And then that's heights average for kids by class size. Here's the elementary data. Very pleased to continue to see Columbia Heights very supportive through the board and through the superintendent and principals to keep the class sizes small. As you can see, in every single category, we're less than the metro average, except for third, we're straight on. So we do not exceed in our elementaries any of the metro averages of class size. And that is something when people come to the placement center, or today I received a call from a woman with three children, a first grader, a third grader, and a fourth grader from Minneapolis. And she said, "We heard Columbia Heights has small class sizes in the elementaries. Which elementary would be best?" Is that they're all fantastic. Come take a tour of all of them. At the academy, again, art, FIED, science, there are many more courses, but I'm just giving you a sample of, in the academy, in Heights, we're lower than the metro average, and FIED, we're slightly higher, and in science, we're exactly. The high school, you can see again, heights versus the metro average. So this is 2010, so the 9-10 school year through this year. The Superintendent Kelly asked me to gather all the data from the previous class-size studies and put it together in a chart for you so that you can see the elementary, the junior secondary, which of course is our academy, the senior secondary, and then K-12 from 9-10 school year until the current year, 12-13, where our class sizes have been. Pretty stable, frankly. Just for a kick, we did another surrounding district, which will not be named, and they had pretty dramatic variations in their class sizes from year to year. So it really shows good management by Superintendent Kelly and the principals and directors, and good direction from the school board, as you can see, to keep our class sizes under 30. And that includes, obviously, the K-12 or the secondary averages. These are averages. These are the participating districts. Again, if you're interested, I can get you a list of the districts that participated.
Questions?
Pretty good data.
Yeah, very good data. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Next is Board Policies First Reading. Scott?
All right. This is a first reading for the public comment. The board policies are as follows. 203.2, Order of the Regular School Board Meeting. 425, Staff Development. 608, Instructional Service Special Education. 615, Basic Standards Testing. 618, Assessment of Student Achievement. And 805, Waste Reduction. 806.1, Crisis Manual. And these policies will appear on a future agenda for approval.
All right. Anybody have any questions? We're going to move into our action items. First one is acknowledgment of contributions. I'll read the resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of school district bequests donations or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustees of any trusted credit created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $745. Donations of $2,000 to Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund from Kiwanis Club of Columbia Heights for Kiwana Scholarship. Donation of $200 to Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund from Barb and Rich Osborne for Joe Kliss Memorial Scholarship. Donation of $200 to Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund from Georgianne and Edward Schultz for Joe Kliss Memorial Scholarship. Donations of $100 to Columbia Academy from David Hartman for Student Needs. Donations of pork and supplies to Columbia Heights Public Schools from Bill Streff for All the Staff Picnic, estimated value of $862. Donations of books to Highland Elementary from Michelle DeWitt for Ice Cream and Books Family Event, estimated value $267. Total fiscal year 2012 to 2013 monetary contributions to date is $36,449.66. I will take a motion on the floor to accept the donation.
Second?
Got a motion by Ted, seconded by Scott. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. 745, I mean, is that... That's an error.
Is that an error? Oh, okay. What? It's what? Oh, up in the top, the detailed background amount of 745? What should it be?
That's what she's looking at. Good catch. $8,620.
All right. The board will accept the appreciation of the contribution detailed in the background in the amount of...
That was my question if, you know, the amounts were supposed to be.
So people know, this is all kind of new to us that we're starting this. This is the only second time we've done this. So this is, you know, just a start of a new action item that we have to do per statute. So I've got a motion on the floor by Ted, seconded by Scott. Further discussion regarding gifts and contributions.
I guess I'll move the amendment is what I'll move forward.
We have to move to amend the detailed background amount of 745 to the new.
We need a second.
So Ted has moved it, and I do need a second.
Second.
A second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we've moved that, and now we've got, now we need to reread that.
We will call that. Oh, that's for the motion. Never mind.
Yep.
We need to reread that. All right, we're good.
We're good.
We're good.
We can rave the reading, I believe.
All right. And then now we're moving into the action. Go ahead, Ted.
Is it a resolution?
It is a resolution.
It is a resolution, but we don't have to read.
No.
We don't have to have a roll call.
We do have to have a roll call on the resolution.
I know on the resolution we do, but are you talking about the amend?
The amendment.
What are you talking about?
Oh, I thought we were voting on the resolution. No, if we're just voting on the amendment, then.
Yeah, that's why, that's why.
But now we're going to have a resolution.
Right, and then I'll have a call.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Go ahead, Nicole.
I believe we have to move to vote on the resolution now.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, on the second, okay. I thought it was just on the amendment.
No, we have a motion by Ted, seconded by Scott.
Member Meyer.
Aye.
Member Landwear.
Aye.
Bardell.
Aye.
Chair Lee.
Aye.
Member Larkin.
Aye.
Member Palmer, aye.
And that resolution has passed. We would like to thank all of those who have donated to Columbia Heights schools. We appreciate it. Next on the agenda is teacher ECFE Teacher Seniority List. Lindsey Bennett, Director of Human Resources, please.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. HR, we continually monitor and update the teacher and the ECFE seniority lists. They're two separate lists for the two groups that are covered under the teachers' collective bargaining agreement. Each year, we send out these lists to staff so they can review and have any changes or talk to HR if they have any concerns. So we went through that, so I'm bringing forward the teacher and the ECFE teacher seniority list for approval tonight.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on the floor.
A move.
Second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Ted. Discussion on the seniority list. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion has carried. Thanks, Lindsey. We appreciate it. Updated 2012-2013 budget. Bill Holmgren, Director of Finance and Operations.
Madam Chair, Directors of the School Board, and Superintendent Kelly. HR, we continually monitor and update the teacher and the ECFE seniority lists. They're two separate lists for the two groups that are covered under the teachers' collective bargaining agreement. Each year, we send out these lists to staff so they can review and have any changes or talk to HR if they have any concerns. So we went through that, so I'm bringing forward the teacher and the ECFE teacher seniority list for approval tonight.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on the floor.
A move.
Second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Ted. Discussion on the seniority list. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion has carried. Thanks, Lindsey. We appreciate it. Updated 2012-2013 budget. Bill Holmgren, Director of Finance and Operations.
Madam Chair, Directors of the School Board, and Superintendent Kelly. As you know, we discussed in detail the budget last week at our work session. I'm going to quickly just hit a couple of high points for our updated budget before we vote on it. Just, I guess I want to say you have a copy of the summary in your packet. We do have a balanced budget for the current year going as an updated budget. We do have a very healthy fund balance. We're in a very strong financial position when we look at our school district as a whole. You can see that when you look at the unassigned piece of our budget, we're balanced or actually have a projection of increasing our fund balance by a small amount. Some of the red numbers you see is looking at a change in fund balance are all designated dollars when we look at our capital, deferred maintenance, and health and safety. These are all fund balances that we have in place that we're just spending down a little bit. They are not in jeopardy of being in any bad position. When we look at our food service and our community education, these fund balances we're ending up in the year are all very strong and in good condition. So I guess at this point, I'd just like to entertain any questions, if you have any.
We'll entertain a motion on the floor for the budget.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Scott, seconded by Laura. Discussion. Go ahead, Ted.
Just have a question on the gifted and talented revenues. Are those capped, or is there a way to increase those?
Well, what I do is I just account for the actual dollars that we receive that are earmarked for gifted and talented. We spend much more dollars in our gifted and talented program than what we receive. So all you're seeing on there is the actual dollars that are earmarked for gifted and talented.
Okay. Yeah, traditionally gifted and talented has been underfunded, and it just looked like it was extremely underfunded in this budget.
You say, yeah, we get a very small amount, but there's several hundred thousand dollars that get spent on our gifted and talented program.
Great, thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the telephone system legal notice. Brian Hennekenz, Director of Technology and Security Services. Bill Holmgren, Director of Finance and Operations.
Chairperson Lee, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Before you today is, we're asking for an action item to authorize us to post for requests for a proposal for a new telephone system for the district. We presented you with information on why we're going forward with this. And again, it's just authorization to take bids and cost estimates on getting a new phone system for the district.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by John, seconded by Scott. Discussion. Go ahead, Ted.
I'm wondering, could you explain again why we need to have a new phone system?
Yes, we definitely in our school district have an aging phone system, and a phone system is something that we need to have operating solidly for the district in order to operate day to day. We need a telephone system. And currently, our telephone system is not at that point. It's end of life. It's becoming more costly for us to support that phone system, and more costly for us to bring it outside organization or vendors to support that phone system because less and less support it. So it's become time for us to search and find out what phones, new phone system we can implement.
Do you know how old our system is?
I guess it depends on what part. Over the years, it's been upgraded kind of progressively, so it kind of depends on what part you're looking at. I would say a majority of our phone system was implemented in 1998.
Right, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is steam pipe replacement. Bill Holmgren, Director of Finance and Operations.
Again, last week when we had our work session, we had talked about some facility projects besides the phone system. As you know, we had a leak in one of our steam pipes, moving steam from one area of our high school to the other. This needs to be replaced before we have another problem. The actual repair was actually very costly. I'm just asking for permission tonight just to get authority to advertise for bids to take care of that for this next coming summer.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Scott, seconded by John. Discussion? Seeing, oh, go ahead, Ted.
I just want to say for the public that doesn't know, we've had steam pipe breaches, and it's caused a lot of issues, and that's why we're talking about this right now. And it is quite an old pipe, dating back to when the schools were built, so.
Yeah, these pipes we're talking about replacing are original from the second edition that was put on our high school in 1968.
And what we're anticipating doing is preventative as well, and by replacing the entire pipe so we don't continue to have these issues.
That is correct. If we do run into a problem again where we have to actually pull it up, we have to shut the heat down to part of the building, which would mean we'd have to cancel school, and it looks like, I mean, it could take three to four weeks to actually do this. So we're not in a position to close school for that period of time, so we want to take care of it this summer.
Missy, as much as I support the public being informed, this is all information we discussed at our work session, which was from a posted meeting. So I think if people are interested, you know, certainly come into our work sessions to get the details to allow us to move along efficiently in our meeting here. Just a suggestion for the public is check the work session, see what's up, and come and find out what's going on.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Further discussion?
And I certainly don't mean to delay the meeting, but I think it's important that public, since this is a televised meeting, it's a good way to get out the message.
And I certainly don't intend to delay the meeting either, but as again, meetings are posted, the information that we'll be discussing at work sessions, and it is an open and a public meeting, and I would again encourage people to come to that.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion has carried. Next, we have the Highland Remodel Bid Award. Bill, you're up again.
Yes, as you know, for part of our project at Highland, the addition project, is once we had finished the addition, that the kindergarten rooms that we had used for kindergarten will be changed to a designated art room and a science room. We have collected the bids on that project, and tonight we'd like to award those contracts to the lowest bidder. And in your packet, I have attached the bid tabulation for those, and you see that JS Cage Construction and Company is our lowest bidder, both for our base bid and our alternative one. We are not choosing to award alternative two at this point. The prices came way too high than what we expected. But the first two bids, we'd like to go ahead and award to JS Cage Construction Incorporated.
All right.
So moved.
All right, Ted.
Second.
All right, we got Ted made the motion, and John seconded. Discussion, please. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion has carried. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have election of the school board chair. At this time, it has been brought to my attention that I'd like to open up the nominations. If there's anyone that would like to be, I'd need a nomination, I would need a motion if we want to reopen nominations. Yeah, thank you.
Missy, I would like to make a motion to reopen the nominations.
All right, do I hear a second? Is there a second? I will second that. Discussion. Go ahead, Ted.
I believe that's out of order. I think we closed nominations.
Did I do it wrong?
First night.
The motion is in order. Nominations were closed, but a motion to reopen them is in order.
So further discussion on reopening the nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, and the motion has carried for two. So with that, is there anyone here that would like to make a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Scott Bardell, and I'd like to say something in regards to that. I wrote some stuff down just so I would make sure I got it right. As a board, we're, go ahead.
I was going to say nominations first, and then we would have discussion.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Okay, that's, I'm sorry.
Have discussion. That's fine. Further nominations? Are there any further nominations?
Well, Ted's already been nominated, so.
No, I know, but I can open them up to more people if there's any further nomination. Any further nominations? I have to say it three times. Go ahead.
Out of order, so we're, we are using these existing nominations.
Existing nominations, and then anyone else that, so it always stays as existing. Yes.
I just want to say, I was never made aware that this was going to happen tonight. This is a total surprise. I'm surprised we have a parliamentarian, a person here, so it seems to me that this was possibly planned. And if it was, I would like to have known about it ahead of time, just out of courtesy.
Further discussion?
Clarification on the, I made a nomination for Scott. The existing nominations stand then, so both, Missy and Ted.
Me, Ted, and now the nomination for Scott.
Okay.
All right, as chair. Are we doing this right? Okay, thank you.
Question?
Go ahead, Ted.
How would that affect, since Scott has been elected as vice chair?
If he is actually elected as vice chair, that would leave a vacancy, so then we have to make a notice that there is a vacancy, and at the next board meeting, then that would be where the nominations would come in the election.
Okay, and where is that found? Is that in Robert's rules, or?
Can you address that, please?
Are you referring to the provision regarding the filling of the vacancy?
Yes, he is. He's talking about filling vacancies.
It is, it is in Robert's rules. If you give me a minute, I can find the page reference for you.
No, that's fine. I'm just wanting sure we follow proper procedure.
Okay.
All right, so any, so we have no other further nominations. Go ahead, John, you can.
Okay, and again, I just want to make sure that I say what I've got going here. I guess as a board, we're going on two months of not being able to seat a board chair.
We'll close the nominations first?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Nope.
This is something for me. At this time, I, and we need a motion to close them?
No, it's not necessary to have a formal motion to close nominations. If it's clear no one else wants to make a nomination, you can just clear them closed.
Okay, at this point, we're going to be closing nominations for board chair. All right. John, go ahead.
Okay, here we go again. As I said, we've been, we're going on two months of not being able to seat a board chair. Throughout this process, aside from this board chair issue, I do believe the board is functioning sound, and as a group, we're making good decisions. Unfortunately, my concern is the perception is, or will be, that we can't agree on things. During this time, I've heard other members say that this is all about needing change. I've also heard it said, "This is not about Ted, and this is not about Missy." Because of this, and in the interest of change, I therefore nominated Scott Bardell, asking him to reconsider his nomination of board chair. I knew initially, I know initially that you were not interested, but for the good of our group, and in the interest of change, as well as what's best for our kids and our constituents, I ask that you consider being the board chair.
I reluctantly accept nomination. I always want to do what the board wishes is the best thing to do for the board and the schools. My initial reluctance was due to private concerns, time commitments, things like that. On the other hand, I'm here to serve and service for self, so if that's the board's will.
Further discussion? Ted, go ahead.
You raise a good point, Scott, about concerns about time, about concerns about being available. As I mentioned in the first meeting, I'm pretty much in near perfect attendance, and I have for the last four years in the board. I'm very available to be board chair. And when we talk about change, I've never been board chair, never had that opportunity, even though I've tried for several years, for four or five years. That would be significant change to elect somebody who, nobody has had the difficulty that I've had in becoming elected board chair in this board. I want to point out, nobody's given any indication why I would not be a good board chair. I've asked for it over the last few weeks, actually a few months, and all of last year, in 2011. Nobody's said anything. And if there is a concern, please say it. I'd like to hear it. And I think it's important for the public to hear it as well. So if you want change, if you want a new leadership for the board, I would be that person, and I don't know why we would need someone else involved in the chair nomination in the election. So I would urge you to, if you want to vote for change and vote for a new direction, vote vote for me.
Further discussion? Well, I guess at this point, it's, it's up to me to make a brief statement. You've asked for clarification, and I understand that you have run for, for chair, and with all due respect, I feel that the chair is a, is a position of leadership, and, and someone that can bring a board together in strength for, and then, not that anyone is any different in the chair position than any other board member, 'cause that's the way it isn't. It isn't at my lack of support for you, Ted, is for the reason that there was never one time that you ever consulted with me as, as board chair, and as a team, as a team player. And I'm sorry to say that. I do respect you as a person and as a board member, but I believe that if there's change, if that's what you really want, we would've done that two years ago, because that's what we did. I stepped out of the role of being chair at that time for change, and you did not go forward with that. So, I, I have an issue with that, and I'm all about change. I am more than willing to step away from the chair position. I have, I have sat in this position for a while. I don't wanna make this a big process, but I do believe it's about kids, and it's about leadership and bringing together as a team, and I've always believed that. And for that, that's, that's some of the reasons. And I'm, I apologize, but I feel very strongly on building together, and I just don't think that you can do that, and I'm sorry.
I just wanna respond to that. I have reached out to you several times, and again, this is not a personal thing, but I have reached out to every single person in this board, and I, I would continue to do so as board chair. I, you, the, two years ago, Member Bardell was nominated by you. Member Bardell nominated you last year. He nominated, nominated you again this year. If we want real change, we should get away from people nominating over and over again. Obviously, there's been a continuation in leadership of the same ilk throughout the years, and I've not been part of that, and you know I haven't, and the record shows I haven't been part of that. And so, if we want a new change, we want a new direction, I ask for the opportunity to do so. I just haven't had the opportunity in the last four years, because frankly, there's been a continuance of leadership, and not, there hasn't been a willingness to, to change over to a different social group leading, leading the board. And so, it's clear, I think people in this community know that there's been social groups, when you look at the election results, the election campaigning, and that social group has, has controlled the board for years and years, and I'm asking for a change in that control, just for a while.
I don't believe this has anything to do with politics.
It has everything to do with politics.
I disagree with you wholeheartedly. And if you wanna bring politics into it, then I'm not gonna have this argument here, because again, I said as, as a board chair right now, if this, I'm going to be all about kids, it's not about politics. And I, you know, we, I, I think that we should, I think we should move, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that we call it right now. I'm done.
Well, I'm not done, either.
Go ahead.
This is about kids, this is about setting a good example, that, that we can have peaceful change in leadership, that we don't have the same person be leader, or the persons, the people that they choose be leaders year after year, that there is opportunity in this district for other people to, to serve as leaders. That's exactly what this is about, and this is a good example of that.
Point, point of order.
Can I say one thing first? I, I would like to do this. How do I withdraw my name from nomination?
You can simply state that you withdraw your name from nomination.
At this point, I withdraw my name from a board chair.
Okay, now can I say something? I, I'm confused by some of the things you're saying, Ted. I sat here and I listened to you say specifically, it's not about you, it's not about Missy, it's about change. You're being presented with the opportunity for change, and now it seems to me as if it's about change if it involves you, and, and I'm confused and concerned about that. So, I understand your desire to be on, sit in the chair position, but I'm hearing two different things from when you said it wasn't about you, but now it appears that it is.
No, I'm not saying it's about me, it's, it's about, are we gonna have a, a group of board members continue to, to lead the board, and, and just continue to pass the chair position one to another? Or are we gonna have real opportunity for new leadership? And I, and that's, that's what it is. It has nothing to do with individuals, it has to do with who is with opportunity.
Go ahead, Laura.
I, I do wanna just make a simple observation here, is back when we were deciding on the, the different assignments and doing the initial, the initial board elections, that Ted did offer to Scott, you know, he asked him whether or not he wanted to run for chair because of a child graduating, and Scott did say at the time that, that he definitely was not interested. So, now this does not feel right, okay? And I really, I really want everybody to understand this doesn't feel right, that all of a sudden, now you're withdrawing, and now Scott's back in, and.
I'm withdrawing because of, he's asked for change, and he doesn't want me as leader. I'm doing that like I did the last time, Laura.
I, I'm, I, I really, I just really, really want you to understand how this, this really appears.
Yeah, I understand how.
Okay, because now it, it feels, like I said, you know, none of us were aware of this, it feels, I hate to say orchestrated, but I think that's the way this feels, okay? And I'm very uncomfortable with this.
I'm, I'm just uncomfortable. Can you address?
Yeah, I was asked if I would reconsider running for chair. I reluctantly said yes. The idea being that, that if I could potentially be change for everybody involved, break the tie, do it again, I was willing to do it. If it was the board's will, and, you know, I put the interest of, of the district and the board, I have my own private wishes, I, I, I will make time, I, you know, to do it. I, should that happen, I would still need someone else to sign my daughter's diploma, because she won't let, she wouldn't let me, but that's another issue. But, um, again, I.
Well, I think she's asking, you had declined before, and.
Yeah, I declined before, I just thought, I didn't really want, want to do it at that time, and I was asked if I would reconsider, I was asked if I would reconsider, I was asked if I would reconsider, in order to perhaps break the tie, break the stalemate, move head, whatever, if I could be the change. So, I accept it. If I can do it, great.
Could I ask who asked you to reconsider?
Mr. Larkin asked me to reconsider.
I just wanted to make a comment, as far as, I mean, like, I mean, Laura, how you were saying you feel about it or perceive it. To me, I guess I just look at it more as, it's just a proposal for an alternative to see if we can come to a consensus, and, and I guess that's how I view what's happened here. I'm hoping we can, you know, get to that point. If we can't, we can't, but, I mean, I, that's how I perceive the motion, is can we come to a consensus or not?
And for clarification, I, I did ask Scott to reconsider, and it was specifically because of the things that I heard previously, that we're looking for change, we're looking for change. I'm comfortable with Scott in that position, and that's why I asked him to reconsider. There was, if it appears orchestrated, I apologize for that, Laura, but that was not the intention.
Really feels that way.
Okay, and I apologize for that, but that was not the intention, so, I mean, take it for what it's worth.
We really talk about building trust and stuff, and this, this, really, like I said, this is, this is the most uncomfortable I think I have ever felt sitting on this board, and I, I'm very uncomfortable with this.
And I wanna say.
I have no problem with, with Scott, with your leadership when you were.
Oh, I know, I, I understand.
I mean, I really, I really did think that you did a wonderful job, so, I, I really did.
Thank you. I understand, I, you know, again, I, I, you know, felt uncomfortable too. I, again, I was asked, would you consider it? Would you reconsider? And, you know, if, if possible, to break the tie, and I'm willing to put myself out there to try to do it.
To vote again? Okay. We have to just vote, someone has to call it?
And I just wanna say, we have never gone to these great lengths to avoid electing someone. I feel disrespected, I feel, I feel put down, because, you know, Charlie could've resigned anytime, or could've withdrawn her nomination anytime, and it would've ended this.
As I said before, Ted, I, with how I felt about the leadership part, I actually talked to Scott previously too, about taking over chair, did I not, prior to this? And, and not going forward on chair. We did this two years ago, and it was with the idea of change, and I moved out of the chair position at that time, and it still went 3-3. And, so it wasn't about change. And again, I, I don't mean to disrespect you, and, and, but I told, you asked how I felt, and I told you. That was just me responding to exactly what you asked for, and it has nothing to do with a personal issue between you and I. You and I get along perfectly fine, you know, otherwise, but I think that we need to move forward on this at this point, on a vote, correct?
Well, a question was raised on how to end debate if it does not end naturally. A member may move the previous question, which if adopted, will immediately end debate and bring the motion to an immediate vote. The previous question requires a two-thirds vote for adoption, and it is not debatable.
I do have another thing to say. If we do want change, this would not be changed to have Scott as chair.
Well, Scott was never really chair for only but one month.
But he was acting chair for 10 months, it was?
Yeah.
So, so he's had an opportunity to be chair. The reason that he was chair is because he was vice chair, and that we agreed that in, in event we could not break the tie, that Scott would, would be, would serve as chair. And acting chair is just a title. We all know that. Scott signed documents, he, he fulfilled the role, the role of chair. So, we, Scott has been chair, you've been chair, the only person in this election who's not been chair is me. And so, if we want real change, I would urge you to vote, vote for me again. It's been, it's been so long, and to go through such lengths to avoid electing me as chair really is, does not feel good. It makes me very uncomfortable as well. I promise to work with every person in this board. I've reached out to you, Missy, and you know that.
Reached out to me to talk to me about the chair position.
I've reached out for you for coffee several weeks, and so.
I'm not gonna get into that debate on, on that.
I don't wanna debate that either. My point is.
Can I call the question?
My point is, is that it will not be an uncomfortable situation to, to allow me to be chair. I will reach out to everyone at this table.
Appreciate that.
Yes, you, the motion for the previous question would be in order at this time.
Make that motion. We need a second, right, on the motion? I made the motion? I need, I need a second?
I'll second.
I got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion is carried to close the debate. If you could please, now we would call roll call. Please call the roll, Laura.
Member Lee.
Bardell.
Member Bardell.
Bardell.
Member Landwear.
Landwear.
Member Meyer.
Bardell.
Member Larkin.
Bardell.
Member Palmer.
Landwear.
Congratulations, you are chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now you do have to, well, we don't need to switch seats, I guess. You would need to announce that there's a vacancy, and then how would we do that?
Yes, at this time, you should announce that there is a vacancy in the position of vice chair, and that you're providing notice to fill that vacancy at the following meeting.
I'd like to make an announcement that there's a vacancy for vice chair, and hereby giving notice that we will attempt to fill that vacancy at the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
Right, so.
All right, four topics.
I don't have any. Go ahead, go ahead. Oh, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Go ahead, Laura.
Boy, this is gonna be hard.
Switch around, that's throwing me off here. Okay, the ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Yes?
Yes, that is not, it's not in our announcements for the Highland.
Well, we can announce it right now, it's March 5th, and we would invite public and members of the board, thank you, Laura, for reminding us. It will be start at, what time is that, John? Six, six, excuse me, 6 o'clock at Highland. We'll have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, followed by a brief dedication ceremony, and then some light refreshments, and that'd be March 5th.
Take lots of pictures, because I'm gonna be at a board meeting.
We do have Liz Allen coming, so there will be pictures.
Fantastic.
Which board meeting?
Uh, it's 9:16.
9:16.
Yeah, it's, it's exactly the same time on the other side of the cities. So, I can't be in both places at once. I've tried that, it doesn't work real well, so.
Four topics. If not, close the meeting at 9:05.